Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public joining us and members of the public watching. I will now call the September 28th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. For anyone speaking tonight, please remember to speak clearly and directly into your microphone. For the benefit of all of us, but especially for interpreters, those using closed captions, and those who normally rely on seeing faces to help them understand, we need to project our voices to be heard through masks. And in particular, for those of us up here on the dais, remember to slide the microphone in front of you when you turn to speak, as it won't pick up your voice as well from the side. And finally, if you do briefly remove your mask to speak, please remember to put it properly on after you're done. Ryan, will you please call the roll for the record?
Arnison.
Here.
Elamin.
Here.
Ali.
Sorio.
Here.
Inz.
Here.
Jordan. Caprini. Polly. Ellison.
Here. Student Rep. Gabor Meskow.
Sorry, Student Rep. Gabor Meskow.
Here.
Thank you.
As you can see, we do have a number of members absent tonight for various reasons. They do all understand that we are moving forward with the discussion, and a number of them, a couple of them have asked me to share their regrets that they could not be present, as well as share their support for the draft strategic plan as we shared in the materials. Our focus this evening is a continued discussion of finalizing our strategic plan, which is the next step in delivering on the commitment of the comprehensive district design. As directors will remember, we left our August retreat with a plan for staff to take what was discussed there and bring it back to us in a draft form for review here. As I'm sure we will hear about in more detail from Superintendent Graff and from Senior Officer Moore, the development of the strategic plan started years ago and will incorporate what we've heard from our community since then. I look forward to this discussion and to completing this next phase of the work. Directors, after the presentation, I will have a few guiding questions prior to outlining the next steps to finalize and adopt the plan. Superintendent Graff, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Good evening. Student Representative Gabor Meskow, Board Directors, staff, and those of you who are joining us this evening. I want to, again, just reiterate our primary focus and energy tonight will be around the strategic plan and discussion, but I would be remiss if I didn't share with all of you that we have also been focused on starting our school year. The past few months, starting the school year, you know, the continued efforts to keep our students and staff healthy and safe amidst the ongoing pandemic has been a priority for all of us. I also want to take a moment to just thank the team for their work to process the strategic plan conversation from our board meeting in August and bring that back to us tonight so we can all share it with you. The board has spent a great deal of time, you know, processing this information that we shared with them. We had over 200 pages worth of documents, significant amount of feedback in developing the conversation in August, and I do appreciate the board's leadership and direction that they're providing for us around the values and the governance with this strategic plan. And certainly note that our continued alignment of the values throughout the development of the CDD to now showing up in the final step of formalizing our strategic plan does reinforce and reiterates our promises to students, families, and to the community. And as I've shared with this group before, the ability for us to be not only clear but consistent about what is important to us really does help provide us with the governance and guidance that we need as the administrative team and a district to implement those high expectations as our foundation for student, staff, caregivers, and the public. So as you'll see here tonight, and a little more detail from Senior Officer Moore, he and his team took the board's retreat conversation and put it into an initial draft for your consideration, and what you'll see actually reflects both the retreat discussion as well as the continued alignment of our work from vision to mission to individual actions. And so really excited to share with all of you what that looks like going forward. So I'll turn it over to you, Senior Officer Moore.
Thank you, Superintendent, Director Ellison, members of the board. So it's my pleasure to have an opportunity to present tonight a draft strategic plan and really just a reflection of about five years' worth of work in listening to our community. And I wanted to start tonight with just a grounding, and what you see in front of you are just some amazing people, one of which is on our board. We had students and parents this year, on the 25th of August, spend about 90 minutes sharing their experiences as students and as community members about what it means to be a student and a parent in Minneapolis Public Schools. And what was extremely important about that is I felt like it was a shift for us, moving towards a shift of really centering the voices of our students and our families in the way that we do our work. And so tonight, you're going to see evidence of that as we talk about the draft strategic plan, the 200 pages of research and discussions and hopes and dreams that members of our communities, including our students, shared that has guided the discussion of what you're going to see tonight. And so I want to just reference the names. Kyla Brown, Student Roosevelt, as a thank you. Liliana Ramirez, parent, Student Board Member Rep. Gabor Meskow. Kyla Brown, Middle Row Ann McConnell. Henry Lee, who is a member of our PAC. Jerry Lee. Latonya Jones. Lynn Crockett. Isnano. Abdi. And so this is a group that really led us on, I think, just an amazing journey on the 25th. I'm also reminded of a conversation we had at our principal forum. Principal Youssef at Henry High School shared with us in a principal forum meeting a proverb, "hire the children." It's a phrase that there was a tribe in Africa, the Maasai, and so rather than saying, "How are you?" "How is your day?" They really center all the conversations on, "How are the children?" And the philosophy of that phrase really has to do with the health of a community is always dependent upon, is always personified, seen by the extent to which the children are doing well. And so tonight, you're going to hear how we're doing, and so the presentation's organized with data, metrics that we've seen before, identifying the health, how are our children doing, how's our community doing? You're going to see a set of strategies. You're going to see the alignment between strategies we're currently doing, as our superintendent mentioned, through the CDD, through other initiatives, through reading by third grade report, World's Best Workforce. Your values that you came up with during the retreat, again, guided by the voices over a number of years, and then an edited version of that presented to you for feedback. But again, guided by the voices of our community, of our students, honoring voices, the work of incorporating current plans and reports, right, making sure that we're not having redundancy because the goal is to focus on implementation. And I can't say that enough because I think one of the challenges of strategic plans across the country, and one could argue even in our own district, is the challenge of implementing our values. And it's articulated, I've heard Director Ellison and other members of the board, Director Inz and others, where you talk about a budget is a roadmap for values, so then the strategic plan is a way to get towards that values, the hard work of implementing. And we won't want to fall into the trap of making it too complex and having too many metrics, and so as we move forward with this, and this is 20,000 voices that we've heard since 2017. It's a timeline for the Human Resources, EDIA, we had our value survey with budget, all the way to the last survey with Spring Survey, representing 20,000 voices, 50% of which were families of color, students of color, very confident that what you see tonight is representative of, I think, the hopes and dreams of the folks that we engage with here. And so this concept of honoring voices, honoring the work we're already doing, and folks on implementation is really a commitment, really a commitment to the folks in which we're called to serve, right, which is our students, our families here in the district. The foundation two of our strategic plan, not only honoring voices, as mentioned, is incorporating plans and reports that align. And so during the board retreat that you participated in on August 11th, you reviewed the 200 pages that we're referencing was a comprehensive list of reports that you see listed here, both comprehensive design information, the World's Best Workforce statute, right, metrics aligned to that, our achievement integration plan, ESER funding, right, to what extent is the opportunity that we have with our ESER funding aligned to something, which is this roadmap aligned to the wellness of our community, our students and our families, climate framework, our literacy framework, our teacher equity plan, dozens of program evaluation findings, both from our parents' youth as well as our REAA department, EDI reports, the traditional data that you see. We wanted to make sure that those are aligned, and so as we move forward again and we have a conversation around metrics, we also want to make sure that the metrics identify things we're called, expected to report by the state. We want to make that part of our strategic plan. Dooley, there are going to be some metrics that the state's asking us to report, but they may not be as important to us as a community. So we're also a local community, and so there will be an opportunity, as you see some of the strategies and goals identified in this draft plan, that will give us an opportunity to reflect the values, beliefs, hopes of our own community. And one of the things that I've learned in my own professional career in doing this for a long time, at least going on two decades, is that when you measure something, it has to matter to the people that you're representing, right, that those data points and what we're claiming is working has to matter to the folks in the community. And so that's our goal as we go through this process. The third foundation, I've mentioned it before, and certainly there's a number of ways to share this, but I just want to share, this is the quote, is as we engage with our parent evaluators year after year, what our communities want is tangible action and not just words. And this was said in multiple languages, on multiple occasions, from our families, from our students. As we're engaging people, again, we have a commitment to honor those voices, honor the time that people are sharing their experiences. So again, this work of the continuation of work since 2017 is a commitment to tangible action and not words. So the process was a full-day process, and it was a bit messy, and I think that's how this work should be. And not only did our board members here thank you for reviewing years and years of research, but also having a really deep discussion about values and about, as board members, your experiences with your constituents. And we had an opportunity to have a discussion, and then from that discussion, there was a post-it note activity led by Director Arnison, and identifying what our values are. And in the post-its, if I can recall this correctly, there were four post-its given out to each board member, two yellow, two blue. The yellow represented the highest need or the highest commitment, and the two were also commitments. And so we went through this process of identifying what are our priorities. And then from that, we had an additional discussion about how do we group those priorities, again, based upon conversation, engagement with senior staff, superintendent, and then ultimately came up with the areas that we're going to review tonight. So academics, the concept of accountability, which we'll talk about because I didn't necessarily make one of the recommended goals, but in fact, it becomes a value. Accountability transparency should be part of all the work that we do. Student well-being, effective staff, school district climate. So the draft vision. So from this work to here, to here, to five years' worth of work, we have a draft vision. And you're going to recognize the draft vision here because it really has, it is really mirroring the vision of the comprehensive district design, which is, but with some additions, but all students regardless of zip code and personal needs will receive a well-rounded education. We did have some discussion about the well-rounded education, and so the commitment after tonight, as we get feedback, we will continue to refine the language because that was a priority that you mentioned as well. This plan, whatever we move forward, will be accessible to our community and will be, have the ability to be translated in multiple languages. And very aware that concepts sometimes don't necessarily translate across different languages, so that's the work we will do moving forward once we get your support and approval for what we have presented tonight. Our draft mission. Minneapolis Public Schools exists to provide a high-quality, culturally responsive education for every Minneapolis student. So you have your vision and then the mission, this is the work we're called to do. This language should be familiar because this comes from another board retreat in April 2018, which was, "A Minneapolis graduate achieves excellent success in college career and life with a broad way of knowledge, capacity, skills, and experiences, empowered to thrive in diverse multicultural global settings and communities." And so we have our mission, our vision, our mission, what our graduates expect it to do. And then hopefully you recognize some of this language because we spent about a year and a half on our climate framework, and our climate framework was, again, an attempt to engage with various members of our community around the values. Who are we as a school district? Who do we want to be? Right, so we talk about budgets and we talk about a strategic plan, it's a roadmap. Inhered in every plan are a set of values and assumptions about who we want to be and where we want to go. So as a district, we value equity, representation, and anti-racism. Anti-racism, especially with something that came up really in a salient way in our retreat and also all the data. Physical, emotional safety and well-being, relationships, trust, and communication. Again, this is part of our climate framework. Shared decision-making and voice. You're going to see family engagement inherent in that, in that as we do our work, similar to our launch for Workshop Week, having our students and parents at the center of our workshop week, of our presentation to all of our staff, as our staff wrote commitments based upon that workshop. That's our work, shared decision-making and voice. We hear the hopes and dreams, the desires, we act, we provide feedback back to our community, which is the monitoring. Transparency and accountability, evidence-based strategies. Again, also, that has to do with stewardship, right? So as we have a plan, it needs to be based upon evidence and/or engagement, so evidence can be not only traditional research but lived experience of our community members, collected in a systematic way. But these are our values that guide the plan. So every time we look at a goal, expect to see these values in the strategies and the goals that we're articulating. So let's look at the first goal, academics. And again, I'm going to move through the data fairly quickly because you're all familiar with this, but I think the point is, not only is that as we develop the strategic plan, it's going to be guided by our current reality, okay? And then you have your strategies, your goals and your strategies to change the trajectory. You want to enhance what's working well, right? You want to shift and pivot from things that aren't. But our reality, for example, Goal One, academic achievement, we've had numerous conversations regarding literacy, that is a priority, has been a superintendent priority, district priority since 2016, 2017, and we've had, we have 47% grades 3, 8, 10, proficient in literacy. And if you look at the second paragraph, there is indeed a gap based upon ELL, special education, and race, and income. One of the things as I move forward on literacy, and I've shared this before, we are one of the highest achieving districts in the United States of America for white students. So we do education extremely well for white students in Minneapolis Public Schools. That dream is not yet present, the attainment of that dream, for our students of color and for our students who speak multiple languages and have special needs. We're not there yet. And so this plan, as Superintendent mentioned, of continuing to do the work we're already doing, of continuing to now move from the infrastructure stage to the implementation stage, is a commitment in many regards to the academic justice around literacy and And so we have a literacy evaluation, and you see that, you know, we've studied some of the challenges we've had in literacy with our literacy curriculum, we have a literacy curriculum. We're currently in the process of measuring the extent to which it's effective. We know that not all classrooms have the structures in place, we've been working towards that. We know that we need to continue to work, and we've purchased, but will continue to purchase culturally relevant materials, teach in a way that's culturally sustainable. So that's the work, the data that we have in addition to mathematics, advanced coursework. Advanced coursework was a value that was elevated from the board. Participation rates hovered around 63%. We still see gaps based upon race. We know that that's been relatively flat, so again, as we talk about strategies around academics, those strategies will be attached to changing the trajectory of the data you're seeing here. Attendance and graduation. While we've increased our graduation rates, I think 19 percentage points over the past five years, you still see that we're not there yet when you're looking at differences by race. So there's still work to do. So not only do we do excellent work, but we do targeted work to make sure that the work we're doing is culturally sustainable. Parent input. And I think as we go through all these, I'm not going to read all this, but I will share that the themes, as we go through tonight, they're going to be extremely salient, and for the folks that are having the chance to see this presentation, invite you to not only review the PowerPoint, but please engage in the appendix. I mean, again, that's the same information the board reviewed, and the patterns are going to be extremely obvious, but here's an example. Parents value diverse cultures, right, more opportunities to engage in culturally sophisticated programming and instruction, right, concern about cultural lessons and programming, right, school demonstrates academic excellence. And so from that, we've previously had a set of draft strategies. So you see the goal, and so I'll walk through this and then I'll walk these fairly. Goal One, academic achievement. Every student achieves their full potential through equal access to academically rigorous and culturally sustaining programs. So you see the goal, academic achievement, a goal statement. You have a set of draft strategies. So these are the things that, based upon the data since 2017, we've been implementing. Again, based upon the voices of roughly 20,000 people, we've been implementing, we've been attempting to respond. So these things such as multi-tiered system of support, and again, you're going to see this also with the ESER allocations, fully implement our literacy and math curriculum, professional learning communities, our Cook &amp; Transformation, our magnet school work, our ethnic studies requirement for graduation, just really exciting work. Aligning to the board retreat, so at the board retreat, the board also identified, you identified, focus on the fundamentals as well as so that the concrete to the abstract, advanced, right, literacy, anti-racist, right, going beyond math, but doing that well-rounded And so taking those two areas and working with senior leaders, we attempted to refine the strategies. And so this is a piece, the refined strategies pieces, where you as a school board have the opportunity to react and see if this is meeting your needs and representing your voices. So refine strategies, standards-based core instruction with the folks in literacy and math, ensure all curriculum and instructional practices are anti-racist and sustain the cultures, languages, and experience of our students. We want to have magnet school pathways that offer innovative thematic instruction and integrated learning opportunities. Again, hopefully you see this was evident in the work of the Conference of District Design. But then as we have innovative magnets, we also want to have excellent community schools that have access to every student regardless of zip code, has access to STEM, music, art, language. Our high schools have ethnic studies and college credit courses, and that we're implementing professional learning communities, ensure that all students' needs are met. Regardless of where students enter, there's a commitment to progress those students in an excellent way towards their own individual goals. So those would be the five strategies for academic achievement. Again, the goal is that we wanted to have three to five strategies, and I think you're going to see five strategies on every goal, but a limited number of goals. So we set on four goals, we have our strategies, and then three to five metrics. So that's the commitment, I was talking to Superintendent about that, and that's challenging because sometimes when you're taking a look at, if you're not measuring, it doesn't matter. Well, we think we can come up with three to five metrics per each goal so that that can support the monitoring. It's really difficult to monitor if you have 50 metrics. It doesn't become meaningful to folks. And so a strategic plan is a commitment to the community and to our students, and so we want this to be something that everyone can access and understand and engage in. Goal Two, student well-being. So again, the same process, and for this, we used our youth evaluation memos. We summarized five years of data from our youth evaluators. We also have an EDI survey, you know, things such as positive approaches to behavior. So you're going to see a strategy, for example, on restorative practices. You're going to connecting, school connecting to real life. Our Minnesota Student Survey, right, so we want to have students that are connected to adults. We want to make sure that every student has someone that they can talk to. This data we're showing now is particularly relevant when we look at disproportionality and discipline. And one of the things that school districts across the nation, including Minneapolis, have not done is we have not been able to address the disproportionality in suspensions and referrals. So we would have, as a district, one of the lowest suspension rates across the United States of America, something to be proud of. But our disproportionality is on par with any place, unfortunately, across. And so there is a group of students that are evident in this data that you see here that we're not serving well. And so the strategies are attempting to address the 21%, the 12% that say they don't have an adult to talk to, right? The 29% of males, 26% of female, that say they can talk to adults at school about their problems. Like, that's extremely low. You know, the obesity, overweight, students feeling not only emotionally healthy but physically healthy. And so you're going to see that in the student well-being area. I mentioned suspension data. School connectedness, relationships, again, that's going to be aligned, the data informing this goal. I'm sharing these data points also just to give you a feel for the type of things we would measure. So this goal in particular, we're going to get innovative a bit, and we're going to want to look at things such as student agency, you know, perhaps we look at Goal Four, coming up with the climate index, and we'll have a chance to talk about that as a community. 58% of students say that they almost always feel their teachers care about them. Okay, so when you set targets on that, I would say our target one would be 95% to 9800% of our students say that they have, that they feel their teachers care about them. 33% of students say they always, they almost always feel their teachers are interested in getting to know them. Okay, so we're going to be collecting data of student perspective, how does that look relative to a staff's perspective? And then our work is going to be informed around the perceptions and voices of folks in which we serve. And our resources, when you have an effective strategic plan, you have resources aligned to get that work done. And so you see draft strategies, you see the board retreat, priorities of social-emotional learning, huge priorities around mental health, huge priority around meeting the needs of all students. Mental health in particular is an area that's also aligned really nicely with the Conference of District Design. Social-emotional learning has been part of the superintendent's priorities for the past five years, going on six. So we're attempting to align, and then you have refined strategies. Equal access to culturally responsive counseling and mental health services. Going back to the values, I want you to see that, remember our value was equity? So as we come up with our strategies, we're not only going to provide counseling, mental health services, but they're just going to be culturally responsive. health services, but they're just going to be culturally responsive. Fully implement a restorative approach to classroom management. Okay, so shared decision-making and voice, restorative practices around classroom management, starting with a restorative mindset all the way to if the making the classroom a space and our buildings a space in which folks want to repair. Right, so we see that at times when our students aren't engaged, you don't feel like the school environment's a place for them. Restorative practices doesn't necessarily work because they're not wanting to restore their space in the classroom. They don't want to go back. Okay, so we want to start with looking at our students as assets, our community as assets, building from that, making sure that our engagement, shared decision-making voice is happening in the classroom. When a student needs to learn, when they've made a mistake, we want to wrap our rounds around our students and make sure they have an opportunity to learn and repair and move forward. And so again, that's the values that we see here. Social-emotional learning in our classrooms, physical safety and welcoming in school environments, right? So you've heard things such as walk zones, clean buildings, building improvements, land care, emergency management practices. Those are all things that our community and our students that we value. It matters that the building's clean. It matters that a student goes from one high school to the next, and the physical structures look so different. I've heard directly from our students regarding that over a number of years and our community members. Healthy child development through nutritious meals, promotion of physical activity. So again, that's the strategy. You're going to see that evidenced with the continuation of work around the nutritious meals that we offer, the cooking rather than the packaging. And our students say that's something they value, and that's something that, again, a strategy would be that we want to continue. Effective staff. This is one that we've talked to also a number of years about the goal, and this is every data point that we have the opportunity to collect through students or our families. Very clear in our staff. Hire more staff of color, particularly teachers of color. Okay, so that's from students, but also our community members. Encourage and prepare all staff to talk about race and culture in their classrooms. And so again, this is the work around cultural sustainability. We talked about, also, you'll see evident in here, our racial incident protocol work. You'll see work around the equity competencies as I get into the strategies. Provide all staff professional development, okay? Cultural humility, accountability to the folks in which we're called to serve. The professional development should be relevant. Okay, so we did a professional development survey, and so we're, again, looking at the voices of our teachers in here and saying that professional development should be useful. In addition, we're going to continue to have professional development opportunities, not only for our teachers, our licensed staff, our teachers, but also every person within the organization, again, with the value around equity. You know, we've looked at the challenge of sustainability. The HREDA going back to 2018. And I'll call out, you know, when you look at the strategies, we're trying to address the limited pool of teachers of color. Hence, you're going to see strategies around pipeline developments. I would argue around climate. So we want to make sure that when students and staff have positive experiences here, they're going to want to come back and stay committed to Minneapolis Public Schools. Challenging work environments, we identified, persistent negative interactions. Minneapolis is an unwelcoming place to work. Again, what I, I'll just say this, like, one of the things I really value about working here and working with this board and previous boards is that we're not afraid to name what we need to do. Like, there's a space of truth that you have to get to in order to come up with strategies that are meaningful. You can't make change if you don't tell the truth. So this idea, when we did the HREDA, Minneapolis would be an unwelcoming place to work, leading to development of climate framework, leading to additional resources, moving towards the HREDA, the HR department. And so that's what we're attempting to do with this work is alignment. And so we have our strategies. That should be familiar. And then from the board retreat, I'll call those up. These are your words from the board retreat. Anti-racist, again, I mentioned that value. That was also in the climate framework, identified from thousands of engagement opportunities. But the district should be anti-racist, our staff should be anti-racist, that is, and policy 1304, which mentions that your expectation as a school board is for our staff, regardless of race, to interrupt acts of institutional racism as well as individual racism, right? Equity affective staff and workforce. And then this is something that really came up in the discussion, intentionality. We wanted our staff to be present. So we talked about hiring the children and being present for our children, being present for our community. So the intentionality of having purpose, we know why we're here, we're student-centered, and we're relational. We focus on the relationship development. And so from that, strengthen pathways, reduce barriers for talented and diverse Minneapolis employees and potential employees to become teachers. Pathway work. Maintain the teacher equity plan, focus on staffing needs of Minneapolis' 15 highest need schools. So there's work around the teacher equity plan that's happening in which there is intentionality around making sure that we're retaining and stopping the teacher churn. We talked about during the Conference of District Design that there's this vicious cycle where you have under-enrolled schools, and then those schools tend to be schools that are racially identifiable. And then they turn, in turn, you end up having teachers leaving every year, leading to an education that is inequitable for all. So again, that's the strategy. Deepening strategic recruitment of high-quality diverse teachers and staff. Pursuing negotiation strategies that address contractual barriers to the equitable distribution and the recruitment, hiring, and retention of high-quality diverse teachers and staff. The concept of equitable distribution is actually present in world's best workforce language. This contract negotiation, that comes directly from the Human Resource EDIA. And so having, engaging in contract negotiations with equity at the center so that we're able to move forward, even a disagreement behalf of our students and families. Pursuing authentic engagement with Minneapolis' parents around the design and implementation of equitable HR policies and practices. So as part of the HREDA and also the work moving forward, the commitment on the strategies for goal three is that we want to provide a feedback loop for policies and practices regarding human resources. And, you know, there are, there's a lot of knowledge and wisdom in our community that can address some of the challenges we have regarding staffing. And so there's a commitment from senior leadership within that strategy to have an open ear and try some innovative things. And finally, goal four, school and district climate. I think Ryan's helping me out. Ryan, are you helping me out? Are you moving it? Am I moving it? Appreciate you. School and district climate. So again, youth and parent input. And again, this is the, I just want to say, like, this is the cycle of continuous improvement is we're always going to start with data because we always want to start with a space of shared understanding. So here's some youth and parent input, right? And this is very clear, more opportunities for student voice within school decisions. You're going to see that, for example, in the recommendation on our ESER III application to have a more structured role for our citywide student government. You're going to see more of a structured role for our youth evaluators. And a commitment not to just collect data and voice from, as mentioned at the last board meeting, not just collecting student voice from those students that typically tend to be engaged, but we're also naturally engaged, folks, students, that may not see that our schools are a place for them. And so more opportunities for student voice in our school decisions. We're going to co-create policies with students and staff so that all members of the school community know and agree to follow them. So this idea of co-creation leads to shared understanding and commitment and engagement. You know, 74% of families, children of color, American Indian state, the most important factors include school feeling welcoming to my family. Again, this is the foundation piece of the climate framework. Parent wants proactive communication. Parents want to be partners in child's education. You're also going to see within this goal four, some of the work we're doing around site councils, is internal equity diversity impact assessment around site council, and our site councils to be representative, to look like the schools in which the students are attending. And so we're making a larger commitment to take a look at site councils. And so again, tangible words and action, not just words. And the themes are similar. Students need to receive useful feedback on their learning. That's how you have positive climates within the climate framework. Shared decision-making and voice, right? Positive climate, students have an opportunity to engage and share what they, what's learning, what they're doing well, what they're struggling with. Taking the learnings from our distance learning, right? As the pandemic, and taking those best practices from our student voices and incorporating that into the work we do. Again, parent and employee values. This comes from our budget survey 2017, I believe, right? Prove student outcomes, equity, effective staff, resort. I mean, you see that, that we're attempting to do with the, engage with the strategies is that we're attempting, again, just to build off what our communities has said for years, 2016, 2017. And I would even reference, I was sharing with the superintendent, when he started, we actually did a staff survey, I think it was like roughly 1,000 staff responded, and we saw the same things, our staff during even 2016. Math and literacy curriculum, more investments in mental health, focus on social-emotional learning, accountability, equity. Again, these themes haven't changed. What we're committing to with this plan is a commitment to implementation and trying to have something manageable that we can monitor so that we can support that accountability, transparency value back to the community, to you as the board, to support your ability to monitor the work. Well, you see the draft strategies. Equity competencies, climate framework, restorative practices, parenting, youth evaluation, strengthening our community partnerships, that was something that was elevated, student placement. So from the board retreat, you said you wanted to see community connect at schools. So you wanted to see that our community schools were engaged with the communities in which they were serving. You wanted to see meaningful opportunities for students. Again, anti-racist and equity. Our climate should be anti-racist and equity-driven. Welcoming, relational, accountable. The goal, Minneapolis is known by our community as welcoming, responsive, and connected. And so goal four is school and district climate. And so you see the refined strategies here. So we're going to fully implement the climate framework. We're going to use our district equity competencies, which we had an opportunity to share with you as a board, and I think there'll be another opportunity to share progress around just equity in general. But we want those competencies, those expectations around equity and the behaviors around equity to inform our hiring and retention practices, our professional development opportunities, our professional support systems, but everyone be clear on what our values are around equity, right? Understanding self, being, you know, knowing who you are, knowing who you are relative to the folks in which you're serving, understanding your own power, understanding institutional racism and sexism. I mean, those are going to be values that people will receive the training on, but will have an expectation, and that will be part of those systems. Consistent opportunities for youth parents and community members to provide feedback. Ensure our student placement practices support integrated learning opportunities and increase enrollment and retention. So there's a market share component of this where we want to make sure, and we know, we heard from our parents, we heard from our parents that 80% of our families that left our district are parents of color, and they said that they wanted more rigorous academics. They said that they wanted our schools to be safe, both inside and our communities be safe outside. Hopefully you see that here. And that they wanted to be valued and respected. So again, this idea about climate, there's some really nice metrics that we can apply to the extent to which we're having a positive climate or not, and I'm really excited to share those with you as a draft. Finally, goal five. So this is the goal that actually became a value. And we, and you spent as a school board a large amount of time on this, and this is one that differs a bit from our previous strategic plan acceleration 2020. In the sense that acceleration 2020, if I recall, goals five and six were more operations goals. That is, that's the core work that you do. And so as a board, you're saying, well, as a superintendent, yeah, we, it should be responsible and sustainable operations. There should be fiscal responsibility, balanced budgets. Staffing should be predictable, right? There should be pathways. That's just the core work of a well-run district, and that's the responsibility of your superintendent. And so rather than having that as a goal, which really should just be an expectation of any citizen in this city, any person who wants to attend or currently attends Minneapolis Public Schools, that becomes the superintendent's, part of the superintendent's evaluation potentially. And there's also department plans. So this is strategic plan, but there'll be internal department plans that are looking at servicing our staff and our students effectively with the core function. To call this like a core function goal, again, that becomes just the work that we do. So there's a clear decision to not do a goal five, but we, just so you know, we do have department plans, and there's metrics that are monitored internally. That goes to the superintendent as part of our internal accountability process. So at this point, look at that, Superintendent. Board members, 47 minutes?
Started a little late.
I was giving an hour. So I don't know, I don't know if it's left 100, hour, and we have 13 minutes for questions. Not that long. But at this point, just open it up for discussion. I'll turn it back over to you, Superintendent Director Ellison, in terms of, I believe, just next steps, discussion, I believe.
Thank you, Senior Officer Moore. And thank you to your team and the support they provided in pulling this information together. Again, I just want to restate for the public that this has been many, many years of data that we've collected and reviewed, processed as a board, as the administrative team. And I think the retreat that we had in August, it really did provide a great deal of focus and prioritization and where we needed to move as a district. So we're pleased to be able to share this with you today. The vision, mission, draft, strategic plan, the goals, those are all things that, again, we've taken from the work that has been in place and working on, we've been working on for several years, and then what we got from direction at the board retreat in August. So at this time, Chair Ellison, we're happy to answer any questions or just be a part of the discussion at the board.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Senior Officer Moore. Okay, directors, we just heard, got a lot of information. We're going to take this step by step. As you've heard Superintendent say and Senior Officer Moore say, when we met in August, we reviewed where we've been and the input we had collected. We talked through our commitments and we prioritized them. Can we look at slide 12? 11? Yes. Directors, let's confirm that this reflects our consensus. Do we need to revisit anything listed here? Hit your request to speak button. I can call on you. We talked about the academics, fundamentals, advanced literacy, beyond the reading and math. The student well-being, SEO, effective staff, and then the school and the district climate. Director Arnison.
Oh, I just was, what I'd like to say is not to add anything, but to me, this slide reflects our discussion and captures what we discussed in the August retreat. So it looks like you captured it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? So this is, this was captured. This is what we talked about. Let's look at the draft vision and mission statements. So regardless of their background, zip code, and personal needs, all students will receive a well-rounded education that prepares them for future success. Does this capture our sentiment? And is there anything we'd like to add or take away? Director Elamine?
I guess I'm just a little concerned with the well-rounded education. To me, that leaves it quite broad and needs to be nailed down more. Well-rounded, I mean, how does that show up? It can show up from one way for our white children and a different It can show up from one way for our white children and a different way for our African-American children. So I, I would like to see the language be a little more intentional about where we actually, the vision of what we're trying to do. So if maybe we can just share with me a little bit more, when we say well-rounded, what does that mean for our black children? And what does it mean for our white children? Because clearly, our white families have been succeeding. We have been using this benchmark, and you can tell me how long we've been doing that and seeing that it works for our white families, but not our black families. So as we continue to use the same practice that we've been doing, help me to just grasp the well-roundedness and continuing to use the same methods that we have been using trying to go forward.
Okay. We're going to talk, I'm going to everybody, and then we can come back and get some responses from staff. Okay. Director Sario?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just going to follow up Director Alamin's point when it comes. And I know this is a draft, and I wanted to restate again. Also, I do have an issue with the word well-rounded, because when it comes to translation, it's just really difficult, specifically when it comes to Spanish. I don't know about other languages. So being more intentional and direct, and I appreciate it's a draft. So just being very mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Enz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to comment on the vision and the mission sort of collectively. And I feel like overall, there's a lot of, in, in the four separate goals, there's a lot of language about being anti-racist. And we don't really have any explicit language about being anti-racist in the vision or the mission. And I think that kind of speaks a little bit, not necessarily, it's like tangential to what Director Alamin is saying a little bit. I know that it's in the list of values that we have. As a district community, we value, and it says equity, representation, and anti-racism. So I don't know if there is space in that mission or vision for some more explicit language about race. I know there's the culturally responsive education language in there. I guess I just feel like overall, the language is kind of generic for the mission and vision when you look at our city and where we're at right now. So that's my overall critique.
Thank you. Student Representative Gabor Meskell?
So with the draft mission, I, I specifically, I think it's important to mention having a high-quality education for students. But I think it's also important to mention how the disparity between white students and students of color when it comes to rigorous courses and when it comes to AP and honors courses. And there are those high-quality classes available that it's not very accessible for many students. And so when, kind of a director, I mean, so when you talk about a well-rounded education, that can mean very different things depending on either what school you go to or, you know, what student you are.
Thank you, Director Arnison.
Thanks. So kind of in support of what others have said, what I'm, I'm recalling our discussion at the retreat. And I think we did get into this a little bit about what does well-rounded mean. And so really what I'm hearing, I think what I'm hearing people say in wood support is that I think, and I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I'm kind of recalling, at least in August, that I think when we like all talked a little bit about well-rounded, what that meant, I think we had similar, I, I think we had similar sorts of visions on that. But I think what I'm hearing us say is that there's value in like spelling that out instead of using the term well-rounded. And certainly I can, certainly can get behind that. And I'd have to go back to my notes, but, or to the previous slide or whatever. But I am thinking we have similar ideas on, on what we meant. That has been reflected in some of the other slides and goals here more explicitly. So I'm generally in favor of using more explicit language in all of these things that we've talked about, because I think we kind of have a similar idea. Just would like to spell it out, flush it out a little bit more.
And Superintendent Director Ellison, I mean, that, that is exactly the conversation. And I think, so we, that is not difficult to do. My well-run education, music, art, technology, language. So we will, we will, we can address that fairly easy in terms of adding what that is and then being able to measure that. So that is something that I want to just say to, to the board, acknowledge that that was something that was discussed. That was a really important discussion that you had. And so I think what I'm hearing is, is spell that out. And what we attempted to do was, was have a bit more brevity. But that's a value you have, so that's not difficult to do. I'm also hearing very clearly the anti-racist piece. Again, that's a value. So I'm kind of excited to hear as board members that, that that's something that you desire.
Okay. Director Enz?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate that response as well, Senior Officer Moore. I think that, what I, what I want to make sure that you're not hearing from me is that this needs to be, you know, I, it shouldn't look like something that was written by a large committee, right? But at the same time, you want it to be, right? But you want it to be explicit in important ways. And it has to be concise as well. But, so I understand that it's difficult and it's a fine line. So I don't want you to think that, you know, I mean, we have the following, you know, we have the goals and then we have the values for a reason as well, right? So some of that stuff gets left out of the mission and vision, and then we spell it out more further on down. But, so I appreciate that. And just wanted to make sure you're not taking from me that everything needs to be explicit in the mission and the vision.
Yeah. Not at all, Director Enz. I really sincerely appreciate the feedback and that this is a draft. So I, I really do appreciate that. And I think this is the point of tonight and conversations is, is to land on that language and that mix of brevity versus explicit values that you're wanting to see as elected officials. So I, I appreciate the feedback.
Superintendent?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair Ellison. Thank you, Board Directors, for your comments. I think the, the piece that is helpful for me is that when you look at, when you do a quick glance at a vision or a mission, it's almost like, what's your takeaway? What's the main point you want to take away from, from what you see there? And so I, I think that's, that's what we're trying to create here, rather than having a bunch of words as you look at that. All students, regardless of their background, zip code, and personal needs. So Student Representative Gabor Meskell, to your point about some kids will have this, some students will have this, others will have this. That's the intent there with the regardless of their background, zip code, and personal needs, that they're going to receive that. The well-rounded education, again, I think that becomes, you know, educational jargon, and it's hard to contextualize for someone who's not in it, like what does that mean? So we'll have to, we'll have to look at that and see how we can expand and give more intentionality to it. Because as already mentioned, when we started to, to dissect it, I think people understood, well, yeah, that means you get this element of your experience and this element of your experience, and it's a content area, a subject area. So we do appreciate the feedback and certainly the anti-racist comment, you know, and where that fits in, that, that to me, if that was embedded in here, it would stand out. It would be the takeaway for someone who was looking at it, whether it's in the vision or the mission. And we'll certainly look to, to balance that.
I think what I also heard, Directors let me know, if I'm mistaken, is that we talk about all students, is that we look at our results and we see that they're disparate. That, you know, they're, they're different depending on the students. And that we want to recognize that, maybe in our mission, that we're being purposeful when we say all students. What are we talking about? So, okay. All right. Let's look at priorities. Are we comfortable with four priorities? And so we talk about academic achievement, student well-being, effective staff, and school and district climate as our, as our, as our four priorities. Does that sound good for folks? Director Arnison?
Well, this is one that I'd like to actually turn back to the Superintendent and, and Mr. Moore or staff, right? Like we, and I know we had this conversation back in August, right? Like in the, you know, preferred number, and some, some people focus on one. And there's varying philosophies, right, about what the right number is. And I guess that goes again to metrics. We're talking about potentially three to five, it looks like five metrics, right? So that's 20 things that we're looking at. So there's arguments to be made either way. And without, these are all very important things, so I'm not totally sure what we would cut. But I also feel like it's equally important to hear from our Superintendent and staff about your comfort level in taking on that, that number, or if you'd like us to have the difficult conversation about where we're going to focus our energy.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, Director Arnison. Thanks for the opportunity to kind of wade into this space. I think as we reflect on our, our meeting in August, we did talk a little bit about the number of goals. What is that sweet spot, if you will? And I think historically, you look across the nation for different districts and what they put in their strategic plan, the number of goals. And three to five is the range. Three being very concise. And maybe if we were at a different space in a different time in our district, we could have three, you know? But I think when we look at the context of everything, academics obviously is paramount first and foremost. We should have that. Then you move into, you know, the, the conversation about our, let me find my notes here. Student well-being. And again, the context of, you know, not only what our priorities have been around social-emotional learning and the feedback around mental health, but just the, the need that we have now where we're operating in a pandemic. And we know that even though we've been in this space for almost two years now, it's going to take several years for us to really understand the, the impact and the ramifications and, and have that long-term support for our students in this area. So obviously, student well-being is, is something that should be in there. And then we go to effective staff. And again, looking at the, the work that we've done over the last couple of years of just unpacking things around the limited number of staff we have available, the need of our staff to be supported in our district. You know, the high churn that we have and the work from the EDIA and the feedback from all the different groups. It, it stands to reason for me that effective staff, our staff, you know, the connections you have in the classroom are most critical. So that fully makes sense to me. And then the school, district, climate. You talk about a, a change of your, your district, a culture change. This is a big part of it. And so the board creating an expectation and a, a goal around, this is a priority for us, I think very much, we all support that. I mean, there are things on here that, you know, are aligned to the work that we want to do, that we believe in doing. And so now it becomes a question of how much of that is manageable? You know, we can do, we can do anything, we can't do everything. But I would be hard-pressed to take something off of there, just, you know, just off the top of my head. It would be really difficult for me to say, let's bring it, bring it down to three, I think, because they're so, they're so necessary. I mean, you could probably put something under another one, but that would then not raise the level of prioritization. So I would say four, four is a really good number for us. It's in the three to five range. All of these areas that we've identified or you have identified are consistent with what we're hearing. And then in terms of the, the strategies, you know, we are developing those strategies based on the alignment of the board's priority, as well as the work that we're doing and the metrics. So I think we've got a, a reasonable number of strategies, which I think are around five for each one. And then the metrics associated with those would be about three to five. So it does get pretty lengthy. And I think this is another conversation we've had with our, our team communications as well. Like how do we, how do we boil this down to a manageable, you know, document or for, for someone who is not really, you know, embedded in these conversations? And so we've got some thoughts around that and some, some work that we, we can certainly build upon to, to make it more digestible. But what I do not want to create is, I do not want to create a strategic plan when we conduct a survey with staff that less than, what was the number originally? Senior Officer, like less than 45% of the people knew that we had a strategic-
Right, 40% Superintendent.
Yeah, 40% of the people when I came to the district knew we had a strategic plan and could identify what the priorities were. Well, I, I can, I can say with confidence that everyone in this room should be able to identify our four core priorities, you know? No. And that's, and that's what gets challenging, is that you start to get into the details of things. And the, the shift of what your priorities are becomes more debate about, is that really the rest measurement? Is that really success when you have, you know, one person's mind, this is the metric you should use versus another? So I don't mean to go on, but I think those are good conversations. As we talk about what do we want to accomplish with this document, it's really about stating our board values and, and then declaring what the priorities or the goals are for us to, to achieve those values. And then for the rest of the, the organization, we know what work has to happen to make, you know, our, our plan be successful.
Director Arnison?
Uh, thanks, yes. That, that, I was thinking something similar, but also, but it's good to hear confirmation. And to me, these are four goals, like I wouldn't think anyone would know now because we haven't done this work. But I would like to think, and think it's super manageable and honestly common sense for, for, for everyone, who's certainly everyone doing the work, to, to remember these four things, right? That's common sense. We want our kids to be academic, academic achievement. We want them, we want to emphasize their well-being. We need effective staff, and we need a positive school and district climate. They're all related. So like you, I, I can't imagine how we would do one without the other successfully. So if you're, you're willing to take it on, that, that's good. Again, I think there's common sense. As far as the fifth goal, and I think this is probably where we want to talk about that, the fifth goal of kind of the overlying, and I guess I'm of the opinion that five goals are too many. And I also believe that it's somewhat intuitive because that you cannot accomplish any of these four things if you do not have effective, basic operations, right? So I feel like it will naturally, naturally have a focus on strong operations and the sustainable operations in order to accomplish these four. And to, to name it, it's just one more thing for our, for this purpose, right? Like there's other purposes for our board to be focused on that, but I don't know that it needs to go into this document. That's my take on that.
Thanks, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, Director Arnison, for, appreciate you bringing that up also. I think the other thing to recognize is that where we started five and a half years ago, those were very essential and critical elements of what we needed to prioritize. And, you know, if you're not able to have stability, and I always use the analogy, if you feel like you're walking on lily pads, you're not going to be able to go very far. And so with the idea of our, our staffing and just kind of the declaration of where we want to, to begin our work, or we're saying this is, you know, the starting point for it, I think that's critical. Our, our finances as well, you know, just making sure that we have some of those very operational, very technical things in place. And I think through the work that we've done, there's a, there's a definite understanding of how essential that is. And I think that's part of the ongoing development of the implementation of this. As we have consistently shown, when the board sets forward those budget values, we can align our, our resources to those very nicely, very consistently. And it becomes part of, again, the, what you would expect to see in an organization that is stable and structured and certainly has a larger vision and mission and set of goals to accomplish.
Just one more thing. I just want to say, it would be remiss if I didn't say, like it is to your credit and to all of the people working here's credit, that we're, and our board. It's to all of our credit, right? That we've been working hard to get to that place, that, right? Because I have been on the board a long time and do, and have gone through other strategic plans. And, and it is to a point that we have not always been in a place that, there would have been a time where our sole focus probably should have been operations. So it's to our credit, it's to people's hard work that we're in a place where we can actually focus on some other things as well. And that that is, what we're saying is, is implied, right? And we have some confidence that, and there's other ways, there's other methods in which we can continue to monitor that, but it doesn't need to be the focal point of our strategic plan, in my opinion.
Thank you.
And I think too that the work, as the work is being done, and we have real stories and real accomplishment, real achievements, that will reduce the amount within that strategies of what we're trying to do. But right now- But right now, we're at a state where we got a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do. And so for me, um, I don't want to just have words, I want to have action with it to show that when we talk about the racial equities and the different things that we speak on, we don't have a school over here too that's having issues with that, that's not being addressed, right? So that we can have actual tangible things that we can say, this is what we're measuring at against. And then now maybe we need to come back to the table and re-discuss that. And it would change that strategies and it would change the things. But the work will, in, in my opinion, will dictate those different strategies and how far or how deep we need to go.
All right, um, directors. So we're going to take each of these priorities one at a time. So let's start with, um, the state of the current academics. On slide 24 and 25, um, we've linked strategy to board priorities and values. Does this accurately reflect our values? Director Soria?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually had a question in the previous slide for goal one. I didn't, I don't see a mention of, uh, highly mobile students or homeless students. Do we have that data? And if you can provide that data, you know, not today, but I, I would really appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So again, directors, looking at the strategies, um, do these accurately reflect our values? I see some head shaking, but I'm not hearing any. Okay. So let's move ahead to student well-being. Slides 34 and 35 link strategies to the priorities the board stated at our retreat. Do these accurately reflect our priorities and values? Or any comments regarding these slides or student well-being? Okay. So everyone's good with the student well-being strategies. Let's look at the strategies for effective staff. Those are on slides 37 and 38. Does this accurately reflect our priorities and values? I'm open to any other comments or questions regarding these staff, these slides on effective staff. Director Enns?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to, um, return to some of the comments that, um, Senior Officer Moore made about, um, uh, being explicit about anti-racist stuff as well. And before he started that, he talked about, um, acknowledging the truth. And we looked at, we looked at the Equity and Diversity Impact Assessment and how important that was for us. And you, you, you highlighted one of the bullet points on one of these slides, um, with respect to, uh, this not being a welcoming workplace, or MPS not being a welcoming workplace. Can we get that? Do you know where that is, Ryan, or? Challenging work environment with persistent negative interactions, isolation, insufficient technical adaptive supports and job insecurity. And so I want to make a larger point about, um, uh, being anti-racist and, um, uh, how that's reflected in our staff and how we do that through our staff, how our staff are actively anti-racist from the top down. So you start, I think, at the board and then the administration and all the way down into the classroom and the teachers and everyone, everyone within the entire organization, right? And so how do we do that? How do we make sure that we do that? And how do we make sure that the, you know, I think the evaluation process for our staff and the culturally responsive practices that we use throughout the district, right? They, they need to reflect, um, bias training that we all go through. And, uh, I want to, I guess I want to ask a question. This is again, sometimes I feel bad about asking these small questions, but I think they make larger points sometimes. But when we look at our teacher evaluation system, right? And we look at the language that we use in the way that we evaluate our teachers, the way that we evaluate other staff, the way that the board evaluates the superintendent, how do we see bias reflected in that evaluation process? The way that, the same way that we look for cultural competencies in those evaluations and we want our teachers to be culturally competent, we want the people evaluating those teachers to be culturally competent. And when we talk about specifically the limited pool of teacher candidates of color, right? And the way, how hard it is for us to retain those teachers of color, right? What is it in our process, our evaluation process of teachers and the senior staff, whatever, right? How is bias reflected in that process? And what are we doing? The same way that we did an audit for our IEPs to, or for the special ed evaluations to, um, identify examples of bias, do we go so far as to drill down that low and say, look, we're going to look at the nitty-gritty of how we, um, how we evaluate our staff to make sure that we're not, we're not manifesting bias in that evaluation? So I don't know if, uh, Senior Officer Sullivan, Senior Officer Moore, if you want to comment on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Director Enns, thanks for the, the question or the, the-
Long-winded question.
Comment, I think also. What I heard is, as we identify ourselves as an anti-racist organization, it's really important, and these are, this is how I'm identifying, it's really important for us to be able to have a space to, to have that conversation without people feeling, um, like they can't learn from the discussion of an evaluation. So if we don't have that present in our evaluation system right now, how do we ever get to that point to, as a learning organization, to grow and to improve how we are showing up? That's a value of our board, you know? So, um, certainly, you know, figuring out how we can align that to an evaluation so that if, if it says here that, uh, you know, you don't demonstrate, um, you know, bias or, or, you know, there's elements of that in your instruction, we need to be able to say that. We need to be able to focus on that as an organization because that is the priority of what we are seeing as a district we want to have happen. So that's my, my version of what I heard you say to some degree. And I'll turn it over to Senior Officer Sullivan and see-
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just think that, you know, the culture, um, of the evaluation process in education, whether it's standardized testing or it's how we evaluate our people or how we, you know, is based in a white supremacist culture, right? So what are we doing to undo that, right? We are instruments of this white supremacist culture. So what are we doing to, um, to effectively, um, check ourselves as well as instruments of that in creating effective staff, right?
Chair Ellison, poor directors, Director Enns, thank you so much for the question. I do just want to acknowledge that unconscious bias is going to be a part of any evaluation system where humans are giving feedback to each other. And our work is really to do everything we can to mitigate that. We think about similar to hiring and interviewing, there's, there is that inherent bias and we, what we can do is train and support and great systems to mitigate against that. I would say there's a few things we are doing. One, we are partnering with ARE to, to really take equity competencies and embed them into our standards of effective instruction. We're also doing that for all of our rubrics. So again, so our school leader rubric, thinking about our performance management system, so that becomes a grounding part of that work. I would say there's a, a few other pieces that we put in place to mitigate, specifically with teacher observations. One, we do require all of our observers to become certified. It's a three-day rigorous process and it is deeply based on evidence, not based on relationships or feelings. It is an evidence-based process and we do require recertification every year. Secondly, we do have an observation appeal process. If somebody feels like their observation was unfair or was biased, we have a process outlined to do that. And finally, I think we want to make sure that a single observation or a single observer is not accounted for an entire evaluation process. So we do have multiple observers, including peers who are part of every annual process. And then we also have multiple measures, including student surveys. So I, I would say, I think that feedback and development and being a learning organization is an equity strategy for us, but we do have to mitigate against any, any bias in the process. So more to come. We've got a team of teachers and school leaders and district staff working to update those rubrics this year. So really excited to, to launch that and really have those equity competencies embedded in our work moving forward.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to share, I mean, I, you know, the, the HR, Human Resource Equity Diversity Impact Assessment shared, and this is in direct relationship to Senior Officer Sullivan, that one of the challenging things we do is, is providing feedback across racial lines. That is that our staff of color said that they were not getting feedback to the same extent and/or depth, um, of white staff. And so, and so the, the evaluation process mentioned is, is very much a human endeavor. That is the extent to which I, as a supervisor, can have a critical conversation for your own professional growth based upon, as we say, a equity-based tool. So embed these values in those tools allows that professional growth. And I think that's one of the challenges that, that we have when we work in multiracial, multi-gendered, uh, organizations, is that we have to still have the direct conversations with people so that they could improve. And so the, this Conference of District Design commitment, if you recall, where you put the additional dollars in equity training. I'm really proud of that in that, that we're one of the few districts that actually have a Fund One line item now for equity training, support training for all staff. And so that ensures that we will continue to have with the competencies, we lay out the expectation both within the tools, um, in our climate framework, but we're providing the superintendent mentioned, the support through the professional development. We're also able to then say the extent to which you are meeting those goals. And if you're not, uh, we're going to have an honest conversation with you and then give you the feedback loop and additional, um, training. And I think the other piece attached to that is, is the development of the racial incident protocol, we call it the critical incident protocol. Because there will be some cases where things are so egregious and harmful that, that we may have to, uh, go to a human resource and, and legal component. But we also want to be clear, that's part of the transparency and accountability, is that we're very clear in what our expectations are. And then when we violate that, we have a process. So we'll have that process with the racial critical incident protocol that various departments are working on. So I think we're, Director Enns and members of, we're trying to take a systemic approach to it. But one of the biggest challenges that I've found around equity is you have to define what your expectations are and provide that support. And so through the Conference of District Design, we now have the resources to provide the critical training and then partnering with, with the human resource area, embed those values, climate framework values into our tools so that we have an equitable accountability process. So I'm feeling like we finally, as we, and I think this is the story that's worked here, we're having the infrastructure to be able to implement. And we're being very clear on what our expectations are so we can measure. And so that we can be more accountable. So, uh, but it's a very complex, as you would imagine, process. But what a great thing to do to dismantle white supremacy in a systemic way, in a way that you can monitor and actually have resources to support that dismantling. So I, so I, I feel very positive about the direction we're going and that language within these strategies is just fantastic. I mean, goal four, we clearly state district equity competence to inform district hiring and retention, professional development opportunities, we're going to align our professional development, and then the professional support system. So it's, it's going to be present here. And I'm excited that, again, that's a value of the board. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Student Representative, Deborah Muskel?
I just wanted to highlight really quickly, um, the importance of diverse student, um, diverse teacher retention. I think it's a really amazing work that's happening in MPS right now, especially just at my own school, at South High School, there is this noticeable increase of diverse teachers. And especially, um, the, uh, teacher pathway program implemented this year. And I have several people that I know that are taking this course and plan on becoming teachers in the future. And so I just think that a lot of really amazing things, especially for the future of MPS are happening right now. And it's also really important that those teachers, you know, stay at, at these schools, stay at these high schools, elementary schools, middle schools, and are able to build relationships with students of color. Because where we really see the relationships happening, really see that student engagement happening. So I just, I just think it's already kind of happening in schools. And I, I just think it's just helping like tremendously when it comes to students engaging and students really like being, having a relationship with their school community.
Thank you. Director, Alamein?
I, I just wanted to just say real quick, um, I know we're talking about the hiring process too, but I think it's critical even in the, um, the exiting of our, the teachers and different, our teachers of color. You know, we need to find a way, and I don't know if we already have some type of measure on why our teachers of colors or even administrators or engineers, whoever they may be, we need to find out or have a conversation with them in regards to what could we have done better? Was it, is there a pattern? It may be a pattern at a certain school that we tend to lose our teachers of colors and the different staffs. So some kind of way too, to implement that as we're talking about, um, the retention. Because in one breath, we're saying we want to hire more, and in another breath, they're leaving out the back door. So again, to try to make the connections as much as we can and, and continue the work with being intentional behind what we're actually trying to do.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Director Alamein, thanks for the, the comment or the reinforcement of that. We do have, through our human resources process, when we have what's called a separation from the district, there is an opportunity to have staff conduct a survey. And then there is a, um, an opportunity for them to request a, a more formal exit interview with staff. And so those are things that we've implemented and we have, um, been working on now for, I think for over a year in trying to capture that information. So certainly want to continue that and as, as we get more feedback on those conversations, that does drive kind of the direction of what we need to do, both from a, um, an onboarding with our staff when they come in, as well as the professional development for the climate and culture work.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to move on from effective staff. We've talked about strategies for school, school culture and climate. Slides 43 and 44 link strategies to board priorities. Does this accurately reflect our priorities and values, directors? Or any other comments or questions on school and district climate? Okay. So Steph? I think we have consensus on these four priorities. We can move to next steps. Thank you. You know where we are. We're clear on our strategies. The final plan needs to include where we expect to be in, you know, an assigned timeframe. At our retreat, we talked about our values as it relates to what information is meaningful to us and how we want to use information about our students. We also talked about incorporating public mandates. Our staff will be coming back with their recommendations on methods. This is our opportunity to weigh in and discuss any essential components. You guys remember our discussion? I think staff has taken that down. They know where we are. But anything else, board members? Okay. Yes, Director Arneson?
I just to say that it's, just going through this presentation here today, it's certainly clear, I appreciate that you laid out, or laid out the kind of different, um, five different strategies that you had in each, in each area. And I think that gives us a pretty good indication, as you mentioned, of metrics and other sorts of ways that you're thinking of measuring these different, these different topics. And what I appreciate about, appreciate in particular about it, without getting too into the weeds of which, which way you're going or whatever, is that you have, you're coming at it from different angles, right? Like ultimately, what I'm taking away from, from this and our board retreat is we, we value and want to talk about the-
value and want to talk about the, the well-being and the achievement of our whole student, the whole child. We care about their academic achievement, and we care about other things as well. And so I'm hearing multiple, multiple measure, multiple measure points, right, which I think is, I think is valuable, that we have multiple measures.
Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, Director Anderson. Thanks for, again, kind of raising up the conversation around the methodology, if you will. So as Senior Officer Moore has shown, we've got identified, I think, three to five strategies, five strategies in most cases. To your point, yes, we'll be looking at various forms of data that we would be reviewing or using to, to show those measurements. Could be related to survey, could be related to implementation of kind of numbers, and then of course, the internal measures that we are using. And so the idea is that you take all of those into consideration. And so it's not one specific thing, but it's all of those things, and it helps us evaluate the trajectory of our work because it is comprehensive. It is not just a, a single unit of measurement.
And a mixture of qualitative and quantitative, right? Like that's equally important. So anyway, I appreciate your, the thought you've put into this, and I'm confident, and look forward to more details when you come back with it. It looks like you're on the right track to me.
Thank you, Director Anderson. Director, I just, I just have to, so this is, this will be exciting to try to come up with something that we can monitor and measure, like something usable and meaningful to our communities. I think what's also clear is like the ability to measure student agency, right, student well-being. Like those are things that this community cares about and we will measure. Relative to retention, we are developing a climate index in which we look at the relationship of student retention, family retention, relative to staff retention, relative to perception. So we'll be putting that together for you and trying some non-traditional ways for you in addition to the traditional things that we have to measure through our special workforce. And I will really, will appreciate the feedback because we are trying to do something different. That is that we were trying to measure climate, the way you feel, what do you see? That's in part of the initial work with our parent evaluators where they've been very clear about, like, I don't see what you're measuring. So we're going to take, use the voices of our students and parents and make it meaningful and real. So please look out for that. I'm excited to share that with you. I think the team is looking forward to presenting that with you and engaging in meaningful metrics and trying to go 15, trying to present 15 to 20 so that we can actually monitor what we're saying. So looking forward to that conversation. Sad to me, I had to like bring down my enthusiasm a little bit, but it'll be very, very meaningful and positive. So I appreciate all of you.
Thank, thank, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you Superintendent Graff, Senior Officer Moore, and your teams, all staff who are supporting this work and moving this forward, especially given everything else that's going on. So thank you very much. And thank you, directors, for this discussion and for your commitment to continuing to lead on our values. I feel really good about where we're headed with this plan and, and how it reflects both community voice and the priorities of this board. I'm going to now adjourn this meeting. Our next board meeting will be at 5:30 on October 12. Good night.